Shall we get started? All right, we'll go ahead and call the January 11th, 2022, meeting of the Planning Commission. Door, it's about 6:04 PM presently. Like to go ahead and start with a roll call, please. Start to my right.
Kirk Andrews.
Erica Harris.
Deb Cameron.
Jackie Edmondson.
And I'm Thomas O'Brien, and you'll note two new planning commissioners here in front of us tonight. Deb Cameron and Jackie Edmondson would like to welcome them to the Planning Commission. Look forward to hearing what contributions you all have and get your thoughts on the things that are going to be before us. So welcome. We're glad you're here. First thing we'd like to do, first order of business is to review and approve the minutes from last meeting, December 14th. Has everybody had a chance to review those minutes? I'm going to go ahead and respectfully request abstentions from both of you, please. When we call that, if you would vote to abstain, that would be good. Can we get a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as submitted.
We've got a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Second.
We've got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All right, all in favor of approving the December 14, 2021 minutes, raise your hand. All opposed, like sign, abstain. Thank you very much. All right, at this time, we have some organizational and procedural items. We have had some turnover recently in the Planning Commission, and we'll need to elect a new chair and vice chair. Where should we start with that?
Let's start with the chair.
Okay.
I'll take nominations for the chair.
I'd like to nominate Thomas O'Brien as chair.
Any others? All right. Motion to take Thomas O'Brien as chair.
So moved.
Second? Do we, do we need a second?
You don't need one, but.
Okay. So shall, so all in favor of Thomas O'Brien as chair? Any opposed? Okay.
Right, thanks.
Now, now look what I've done. We now would like to nominate a vice chair, if we could, please. Are there any nominations for vice chair? If none, I will go ahead and nominate Erica Harris. Are there any other nominations for vice chair? May we get a, I'll take a second on that, too, if we can get that.
Second.
All right, all in favor of naming Erica Harris vice chair, raise your hand, please. Opposed, like sign. All right, and that carries as well. So we now have a new chairman and vice chairman. Congratulations. Back to unfinished business. Last time we heard, RZ 21-03 rezoning for 600 Ashwood Parkway to amend the conditions of the current C1 C District to allow a retail residential building, or excuse me, retail restaurant building. Staff, do we have a presentation on that?
Give me one second to hold the presentation. So the first item on the agenda is something that was at the previous meeting, which is RZ 21-03 for 600 Ashwood Parkway. At the previous meeting, you all moved to defer it to this meeting today, January 11th, in order to allow staff and the applicant time to discuss and negotiate the conditions. Because there are two new members, I'm just going to go through the overall proposal again. So a little background, the site was rezoned in 1996 and was developed with three restaurants and a large detention pond. Then in 2019, Branch Ashwood Associates proposed a complete redevelopment of the site, which included a 25,000 square foot grocery store, a gas station, and several restaurant and retail buildings. The 1.5 acre site, which is shown here to the right on the screen, was intentionally left blank during the 2019 zoning case. The applicant wasn't sure what was most feasible on that site during the time of permitting. So now they are coming to us today with a proposal for an 8,400 square foot restaurant slash retail space, along with 62 parking spaces and a drive-through ATM. The one improvement to this plan that staff sees would be to remove the drive-through ATM. There's already one ATM in this development, and drive-throughs and drive-up ATMs are not something that we feel we should encourage in the perimeter center. Additionally, with the removal of the ATM, it would allow eight parking spaces adjacent to Ashwood. It would allow them to be shifted away from the street, and those parking spaces are highlighted in yellow, just to give you guys a visual. But we feel that this would enhance the pedestrian experience further, and as discussed at the previous meeting, we recommend a condition that requires the removal of this ATM for the plans. That condition still remains today and has not been altered. These are the proposed renderings. The north rendering is the side that is adjacent to Ashwood Parkway. Staff recommends that each tenant space have an entrance that faces the street, same as the number of entrances that face the parking lot. However, since the previous meeting, we have amended this condition, and we are no longer proposing to require that those entrances be open during business hours. We'll leave that to the tenants discretion and what works for their business model. So that was, you know, the result of our negotiations with the applicant. So overall, we feel that if the applicant complies with the recommended conditions, that the request meets the approval criteria. And so we recommend approval based on the exhibits and conditions, and then I just on the screen have a note on the conditions. Again, we've altered condition number 24 to no longer require street-facing entrances be open during business hours. And condition 26 remains the same. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Anybody have any questions for staff? Commissioner Anders? Any questions for staff?
Do you guys want to do the applicant presentation first?
Why don't we go ahead and do that? Okay, so at this time, we will hear, and we've got 10 minutes in favor, and then 10 minutes for any opposed. So anyone speaking in favor, if you'd like to come forward, that'd be great, please. Oh, yes.
It's not, it's not a public hearing.
Okay.
So if you all want to hear the applicant, they can speak, but there was only one public hearing.
Okay, very good. Please.
Thank you, Laurel David with the Galloway Law Group. We appreciate staff working with us on some of these conditions. Specifically, the wording of entrances on Ashwood Parkway, and also Branch Properties did agree to the condition which required the ability to see through finessration to a minimum of five feet. So. I can't move. Sorry. Okay. I think she's got an IT degree as well as a planning degree, so it's down here in this corner. Oh, I see. Okay, thank you. We do still, however, differ on the wording of a couple of conditions that deal with the ATM. I have passed out to you our revised, our proposed revisions to that condition, and those are highlighted in yellow. You, those of you who were here last time, you remember that this is proposed for an inline bank. And should that financial institution tenant leave the building, then Branch would landscape the, the, the driveline. Here's the proposed rendering. Again, we've agreed to the entrances on glass doors on Ashwood Parkway. And just to orient you as well for the location of the remote teller. The drive that you see to the left of that remote teller is actually the main access to the loading dock to Publix. The parking field being mainly for employees, that is to the left of that. So that landscape strip that you see there will be heavily landscaped in order to screen the remote teller. And I think its location was specifically chosen to be sort of tucked out of the way. You'll also notice that there's a large green space area between the building and Ashwood Parkway. The open space that's associated with this building had to be put at this location because of a 20 to 25 foot wide utility easement. So there's no opportunity to put green space anywhere else. And I'm going to let Nick Tuleska from Branch come up and talk further about the remote teller.
Thank you, Laurel. Nick Tuleska, partner with Branch Properties. Again, thank you for giving us a brief opportunity to describe our view on this drive-up teller. Reiterate a few points that we made in the previous meeting. One of the things that we're trying to do is design a building that has great flexibility and adaptability to the changing retail environment that we find ourselves in. We're also trying to address an issue that we're well aware of in the city of Dunwoody, which is to eliminate special single-use buildings, primarily bank buildings with drive-throughs, by removing them from pinned corners and placing them in areas of the project where they're shielded and protected with landscaping and, and green space in front of them. But from, from our perspective, the need, the need is very important to maintain flexibility in, in the building. We have restaurant uses, we have retail uses, and we also want to have the opportunity to do an inline bank. And should, in the future, we lose a tenant, we want to have a building that we can easily re-lease and replace with another retail or restaurant use. So the, the thought process behind the design here is moving a special purpose, a single-use building off of the corner, placing it in a, in a somewhat protected and shielded location to the rear of the shopping center, but maintaining the, the desirability of having a drive-through for a potential financial tenant. And that's, that's the, the presentation that, that we're moving, we're moving on. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Can I ask a question?
Absolutely.
Are, is this space being marketed to, as a bank?
Well, we're, we're working right now to financial institutions and restaurants and retailers. So the answer is yes.
There any other comments or questions for staff or for the applicant?
I had one for the applicant. Is the applicant in agreement with all of staff's red line changes except for the ATM?
Yes, we are.
Please continue, Commissioner Harris.
Richard, can I get you back up, please? Can you, can you talk more from the city's perspective about the ATM, the drive-through ATM, and provide some more, maybe some more details on the staff's opposition to it? From, also from a, from a present and then a future, why you would recommend against.
So currently, there's already an ATM there on the front of the Publix, which is immediately right behind this building. Yes. So that's one reason we're saying we only need one, not two.
And this is talking about an ATM, not a drive-through bank, right?
It is a drive-through ATM structure, though. It's, it's a standalone structure on that left side of the, the elevation that we've seen there. So it is a drive-through ATM, but not, not necessarily full building.
I did have a point of inquiry. So did you guys consider how that would impact the traffic flow there? Is that part of the decision to recommend not putting the ATM there?
No, typically ATMs don't generate a lot of traffic, and they've shown it, I think, for parking space, spaces, it's fine.
Okay, so it's, it would be more about moving the parking spaces, those eight spaces from the top to allow for more green space.
Correct. What we would do is if the ATM would disappear, those would become, or the ATM, those could move those parking spaces down there.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Ms. David?
Thank you. I just wanted to correct a misassumption. A couple of things. First, the ATM that's at Publix really is just a cash machine. It doesn't do any banking. And what Branch is proposing is more of a remote teller, so it would do more than your typical cash machine. You could have bank transactions and stuff there as well, without having to get out of your car and go into the bank. Now, once, once upon a time, that used to be, you know, we used to tease people where you're lazy, we'll just get out of the car and go into the bank. But obviously, during these strange times, that type of transit, bank transactions is becoming more popular.
Should the space not be rented to a bank, one of those spaces in the Contemplated Unit, not be rented to a bank? What becomes of that area in the parking lot?
It would be landscaped as per the condition. So that condition would apply whether a bank was there in line originally and left, or if there is no bank tenant there at all at the time of CO.
Commissioner Harris.
Let's assume that a bank came in and the bank left. What would be the timeline for turning it into a landscape strip?
I think Jack would be willing to go out there with a shovel and a pick himself, he said, immediately, so as quickly as, as they could do it. I mean, it definitely wouldn't be something that would be sitting there, I swore, you know, for months. I guess we would need a land service.
So just to clarify, as part of the development, if a tenant was not secured, then when the time when the parking lot's laid, and because part of this would be shifting those parking spaces as well. And so I don't think it's necessarily just about the ATM, but it's also about the shifting of those eight parking spaces. So then my question would be, if a landscape strip were added, then what we're looking at is a turnaround of some sort? Or just? I'm, I'm curious how that would play out in that scenario.
Ultimately, hi, Jack Haley. Ultimately, what would happen is, is the area to the left where it says remote teller right there, that drive-through right there would all be grassed, would turn into a grass area.
The asphalt surrounding it, though? So I understand that that strip itself that the ATM would sit on would become grassed, but almost that circular but almost that circular looks like a little mini raceway, if you would.
The whole, yes ma'am, the whole drive-through would become a pervious grass.
So we get, that asphalt would be demolished and redesigned to be a grassway?
Yes, ma'am.
Richard, have you all talked about that?
Not specifically.
Okay, can you give thoughts and feelings on that?
Grass is nice. I'd rather have it out on the front for the pedestrians.
Okay. Thank you.
Are there any other commission questions or comments?
One more question. So if the initial tenant is not a bank, is that going to be grassed as part of the building? Are you going to leave that as a possibility for a subsequent tenant? How's that work?
Yes, if we don't have a financial institution in there, we will grass it with the initial development, and if at some point in the future a financial institution does come, we would make it a drive-through ATM.
Any other commission comments or questions? All right, well, Planning Commission, to quote my predecessor, what's your pleasure?
I make a motion to approve with staff recommendations.
There has been a motion to approve with staff recommendations as they're written? Do we have a second to that motion?
Second.
There's a motion and a second? Is there any commissioner comment or discussion before we take a vote?
I had one. I wanted to thank staff and the applicant for working out the other issues on the deferral, so that process kind of worked well, with the exception of this one remaining issue. So I just wanted to thank y'all for doing that, but...
Any additional commissioner questions or comments or debate on the motion and the second? At this time, we will go ahead and vote on the motion to approve with staff recommendations. All in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. All opposed, like sign. The motion carries. Thank you.
Give me the second. Okay.
Commissioner Edmondson. Okay, that brings us to new business, RZ 21-04. Rezoning 4553 North Shallowford Road from the current PD District to the OI District, and a concurrent variance from 27-72.
Just a quick request. It would be really helpful, especially since there's a few new people on the board for Thomas, whenever, or Erica, when you're filling in, whenever the motion is made, you guys could repeat "moved by," "seconded by," and just let us know who made the motion and who seconded, especially as we're moving into, you know, potential virtual hybrid meetings in the future. That's really helpful.
Absolutely.
Thank you. So the next case, the second case on the agenda, is RZ 21-04 for 4553 North Shallowford Road. The applicant requests to rezone the property from a planned development district to office institution. Additionally, the applicant requests a concurrent variance from the rear setback. Again, concurrent variances are a new process. And so just to refresh, I know that we had considered one at the last meeting, but just to refresh you all, concurrent variances utilize a different set of approval criteria. And again, if you guys have any questions about those approval criteria, please let me know. I'm happy to address them. But first, let me start by, again, giving you background on this property. So in 2012, the property was rezoned from OI to PD as part of a larger overall redevelopment for this area that included the construction of several new residential subdivisions, and then several new city parks as well. And originally, at the time, that plan had also included some potential municipal uses, but those never came to fruition and were abandoned, you know, several years ago. The property, as it exists right now, is considered grandfathered in, but if they want to do any changes, because they're tied to that development plan from 2012, they can't do anything besides future parking for something that no longer exists. And so they are now proposing to redevelop, and that prompts this process. So just to give you a little bit of context for the area, this is in the Georgetown character area, near the corner of North Shallowford Road and Pernosial Court. You can see the properties outlined in red. There's two existing medical office buildings. I've labeled them as one and two there. They're also adjacent to the Emory Surgical Center, and then across the street from the park at Pernosial Court, which is a new park here in Dunwoody. And then they're surrounded by some higher-density residential uses. Oh, gosh. Sorry, my PowerPoint is... There we go. So this is a survey showing 4555 and 4553 North Shallowford Road. 4555 is the Emory Surgical Center, which you just saw on the map before. And then 4553 is the existing medical office facility. Again, I've labeled the buildings as one and two, and they're highlighted in red. Those are proposed to be demolished. Another thing to note on this survey, I've circled in yellow the two existing entrances to the property. Currently, there's two separate entrances for each property. They're right next to each other. And in the fronts of the buildings, the parking lots aren't connected, but if you wrap all the way around 4553, there is some, like, interpersonal connectivity between the two, but there's no parcel connectivity at those main entrances. So this is the proposed development. The applicant proposes to demolish those two buildings we saw previously and construct a new four-story, 60,000-square-foot medical office building. The applicant is also reconfiguring the parking lot, and they will have 68 surface parking spaces and then a 244-space parking deck. So previously, they had just 133 surface parking spaces. The building itself is set back approximately 75 feet from the street, which is further than the existing building. The footprint of the parking lot remains relatively the same, but interconnectivity between 4555 and 4553 will be reconfigured. There is now one shared entrance for the two properties, circled in yellow, and around about there for patient drop-off and also to provide access to the two different properties. And then they've shifted the second entrance to the west, and that's circled in orange, and the applicant states that that's mainly going to be for employee entrance and access to the property and for access to the parking deck. So another thing to note about the parking lot reconfiguration is that on the site plan, there previously was only one row of parking between the building and the street, and now they're proposing two rows of parking between the building and the street. Also, the aforementioned parking deck, the new parking structure encroaches into the 30-foot rear setback. The parking deck itself, you'll see on this drawing, has a notch that I've highlighted in bright blue. That notch is an attempt to lessen the disturbance for a large specimen tree, which is marked with a star. The applicant has generally stated their intent to preserve this tree and also the existing canopy between 4553 and the adjacent residences. The applicant has proposed a 20-foot transition yard, which is shown in pink on this map, between 4553 and the residences. Staff does agree with this. Provided this buffer is maintained, we feel that there would be very little impact to the neighbors, because this is a relatively unobtrusive office use. However, the plans are not very detailed in regards to tree preservation, so we feel that during the permitting phase, the applicant should work with the city arborist to develop a tree preservation strategy and plan. If they're not able to maintain the existing canopy, our code does specify transition yard requirements, and so they would have to mitigate the loss of the existing buffer by planting to the transition yard standards that are dictated by the code. Overall, it is the opinion of staff that while the redevelopment of the property is beneficial to the area, the current configuration of the site is not optimal. The Georgetown/North Shallowford Master Plan provides a framework to encourage better, more responsible development in this area. The plan specifically outlines basic principles for improved architectural character, which includes limiting building setbacks and encouraging parking to be located to the side and rear of buildings. The current placement and parking lot layout doesn't align with these design principles. This is a photo just to illustrate the existing buffer that I had mentioned earlier. I just wanted to give you all a visual for that. This was provided by the applicant. This is also just the page from the master plan that I'm referencing. Towards the bottom of the page, those are the site design standards, and you can see listed there, and I've highlighted them, limit building setbacks and limit parking between the building and the road. And above that are some architectural design standards. So in the Georgetown area, we're trying to encourage a more "traditional aesthetic", and then also predominantly using brick and stone as primary materials when they're visible from the street. This is a rendering of the proposed building. This design is pretty standard for a contemporary corporate development. The facade uses a mixture of glass, stucco, and some metal accents. These are some more details about those proposed materials. They're using several different colors, but again, it's mainly stucco and glass for the materials. These are the recommended changes that we are proposing. So to explain this graphic, it might be a little confusing, but essentially, we're asking that we do a minimum setback here of zero feet and a maximum setback of 30 feet. So that would eliminate the parking and bring the building closer to the street. And then if you move the building forward, there's also an opportunity to shift the parking decks slightly and bring that out of the setback, so they wouldn't be encroaching there anymore. We feel that this would align better with the Georgetown Master Plan. In reference to the variance approval criteria, overall, we don't feel that the applicant meets these approval criteria. There is nothing related to the size, shape, or topography of the site that justifies the request. Again, we just simply don't see the site layout as the optimal one. There are viable alternatives, in our opinion, that would allow them to bring the parking deck out of the setback. While we don't feel there's any particular harm in allowing the request, again, we don't feel like it aligns with the goals of the master plan for this area to allow it. So our recommendation is denial of the concurrent variance, but approval of the rezoning based on the exhibits and conditions that we've provided. I'm available for any questions that you all have. Thank you.
All right. Now that we've heard the presentation, I believe it's appropriate at this point to hear from the applicant. So please come forward. Tell us who you are.
Good evening. I'm Alan Wazinski. I'm with Brebel Land Planning. I'm the applicant for the rezoning and the variance. We actually have an easel. Remember these? A little bit of a Luddite. And the entire site plan, some of it was cut off. Great. Well, again, Alan Wazinski, Brebel Land Planning. Thank you for the opportunity to present this project in front of you tonight. Congratulations to the new commissioners joining the Planning Commission. I might not agree with every variance that staff has proposed. I got to tell you, they've been great to work with on this process, usually accessible. Always picking up the phone, so you should really be proud of the folks that are representing and working on the city's behalf. So I want to give you just a little bit more background on this project before I get into the specifics of the rezoning and the variance. The first thing that you may not know is that the city of Dunwoody actually owns the 4553 parcel over here. Summit Healthcare Group, represented by Mike Stewart in the back, is entering into agreement to purchase this property from the city, and then they will develop this Emory Healthcare Medical Office Building, which will consolidate the sites, combine the, you know, eliminate the property line between the two parcels, like staff explained, and this will create a more cohesive healthcare campus. So this is a great partnership, really, between the city and Emory Healthcare. Emory will get access to the city, just citizens, to help promote and, you know, meet their goal to provide quality healthcare. The city itself will get access to one of the region's premier healthcare providers, and with all the jobs that come with that. So it's really a win-win. And then when you look at the Georgetown-Shallowford Road Master Plan, the landmark framework plan, it actually identifies these two parcels as being ideal for office-institutional development, which is what this is. So it's really a win-win-win. It's something that our entire team is very excited about. And we have members from Cushman Wakefield, Emory Healthcare, Brebel Land Planning, May Architecture, and Summit Healthcare Group tonight that are in attendance. So if you have any questions about that, please feel free to ask them. So a few other things before I get into the specifics of the rezoning. Madeline did a nice job kind of walking you through this side of the property, but I just want to go through and explain why we laid out the site the way we did. So, you know, when we do site planning for healthcare developments, it's a little different than if it's multi-use or retail, commercial, educational, institutional. You know, there's three major tenants that we try to adhere to in our planning, and that is accessibility, clarity, and we always want to make sure that the site is very legible as well. So what do I mean by that? It is really paramount to Emory Healthcare that when patients come onto their campus, they can very quickly ascertain the layout, know exactly which building they're heading to, clearly get to drop-off, loading and unloading areas, and then easily get to a site to park. From an accessibility standpoint, patients that visit the site tend to be in firm or undergoing physical therapy or elderly or disabled. So providing as much parking as possible along the front of a building by the main entrance is also something that they encourage us to design. And so that's what we try to do with this site. Madeline noted that we're trying to align curb cuts with parking across the street, which we've done here. When you come into the site, we're showing a roundabout for loading and unloading, very visible. The first thing that you'll see would have very strong wave finding. So when somebody comes in, they're able to see very easily to the west, you've got the ambulatory surgery center, the ASC, the new medical office building over on the other side. And then from there, you can easily loop through the site, either in a clockwise motion or a counterclockwise motion, and easily get to parking at the front side or rear of the property. One of those conditions on the sale of this property to this group is that the city is going to make Emory, and they love this idea, to make their public, their parking, public on nights and weekends. So the idea here is that the park across the sheet, Purnishaw Park, which has a very small front yard parking lot, residents will be able to use the bays of parking that are existing by the ambulatory center or in front of the new medical office building, and then easily traverse through the site on elevated walkways that give preference to pedestrians, not vehicles, to get over through the parking lot that's to the north of the property, access the park amenities, and then the Greenway Trail itself. So that's, you know, in the spirit of that agreement, we've tried to design the site in a way that there is very accessible parking to get citizens to their park that has, again, a very small parking lot itself. Something else to be designed is we try to minimize conflicts of vehicles and pedestrians on sites. Something else to be designed is we try to minimize conflicts of vehicles and pedestrians on sites. By adding this curb cut aligned with the neighborhood across the street. Employees, when they come in in the morning, they're going to be able to come through the public right of way and then get to the top of the deck, which will be dedicated for employees only. That means that patients coming to the site, as they go through that circulation pattern, they're not going to be in conflict with the employees. So again, one of those tenants, one of those things we tried to design to eliminate conflicts on the site itself, create that clarity and legibility. There's all sorts of other things we really liked about the site plan, the waste management, the way we align the curb cuts to the buffers. And if you have any specific questions about that, I'll be happy to answer that during Q and A. So on to the rezoning. Staff made six conditions. Conditions two, three, four and six. Our team fully accepts. We think they're sensible. We have no objections to them. Appreciate the staff taking the time to write those up. Oh, sure. Condition two, three, four and six are acceptable to this team. Except condition two relates to providing a slightly larger sidewalk along Parnishall Court. That's no problem. Number three is just ensuring that when the building goes in for permitting, that the window treatments stay relatively the same as what's shown on our rendering. You have questions about that? My architecture is here to field those questions. Number four was related to the pre, the tree protection and preservation and working with the city's arborist on that. Something that I've talked to the developer about as well is, you know, we'll end up engaging a third party arborist as well to help us with that. So we're all in alignment with that condition. And then condition number six relates to stormwater management, just ensuring that we're going to bring both parcels up to code to make sure that we're meeting the city stormwater ordinance. Okay, so condition one is the staff saying that they recommend that the commission adopt this site plan the way it's shown, but with the addition of that exhibit C, which essentially pushes the building up to the street, which causes obviously a lot of ripples throughout the way that we've laid out the site plan itself. So we understand that if this was a retail building, multifamily residential, that would make a lot of sense. But for a lot of the reasons that I just explained, the clarity, eligibility, the accessibility that throws our site layout into a little bit of disarray. So what if we move this building up to the front? Imagine you're coming into the healthcare campus because we do want Parnishall Court to be the front door. We want everybody to come off of North Shaliford, enter through this entrance if they're a patient. If you were to enter the site, go through the loading and unloading here, and there's a disconnection that severed to take you back around to the parking deck. You've got one of two things you can do. You can come back around, go by the ASC, but this is a surgery center. And currently, when somebody's coming out of surgery, this is where the unloading zone is. So you'd be driving past that. You could go around that way to create that counterclockwise circulation, or if the building's here, you'd be forced back up into the public right of way where we have employees coming in out of site as well as people read, going to townhomes and apartment buildings over on this side of the city. You'd have to come back into the right of way and then work your way back through in order to get to what would be a much larger parking area in the rear of the site. That is a little bit in conflict with some of the site design tenants that I talked to you about. Couple other things that that would cause, it would eliminate the front yard parking, which is obviously staff's recommendation, but it would eliminate that parking and sever that shared use agreement with the city. People will now have to park a little further to the south. I don't think the public will find the parking as easily as they would within this configuration to get over to the park. So I think there's certainly an advantage to having the parking in the front there as well. In the rear, if we shift everything up and we move the deck, we'll need to end up putting in a third row of parking to make up the parking that's in the front. That parking is no longer by the front door, the way that healthcare facilities typically want it. Now patients are having to traverse three travel lanes through the parking lot and the parking deck in order to get to the front door itself. That's a little cumbersome and far from ideal as well. Something else we've done on the site, Emory Healthcare recently opened up a medical office building very similar to this in City of Smyrna. And everybody's all excited on moving day, semi trailer came out with furnishings to load and unload in the building and the semi couldn't enter the site. There was no way to get into it to unload everything that needs to go into a medical office building. That's probably the reason why I'm up here tonight and not that other engineering firm handling this application. But this front yard, front yard parking here does allow, we've designed it in a way so that a semi trailer, in those rare cases, when there's a moving in and out or a different tenant coming into the medical office building, a semi is able to come into the site, drive through this area here and then come back out. There's an existing turnaround here that looks IFC, International Fire Code compliant for a fire truck, that semi would turn around and then come back out to North Shaliford. If the building's pushed up front, we're going to have height restrictions in the parking deck. And we don't see a way that a semi can, will be able to get into that site, load and unload without backing in, which is certainly a little unsafe. And I think probably in violation of the city's traffic laws. Let's see, there's a few other things that can mention during Q and A regarding it. When it comes to pushing the building up to eliminate this parking, I think it's important to note that when you look at the Georgetown, North Shaliford master plan, it doesn't ban front yard parking. It says limit or prohibit parking as a design, site design tenant. And I don't think the amount of parking that we're proposing here in any way is excessive. We are trying to provide the bulk of the parking back behind the site itself. We're trying to do it in a deck that's tucked away from public view, expanding the transitional buffer in order to hide it even further. So in no way do I see this as an excessive amount of parking, and I think it falls within the limit category within that master plan itself. And then lastly, when it comes to the rezoning, you know, this is a medical office building. The city code, O and I, office institutional is designed for medical office buildings. And the medical off, the O and I zoning has a minimum building setback of 50 feet. So it's a little peculiar. Our team has a lot of rezoning experience. I can't ever recall, and nobody can either, of going to a rezoning where the staff made a condition that essentially is a new variance that wasn't asked for by the applicant. We didn't ask for a variance to exceed what the code's front setback is for a building. Staff is making that recommendation. It's just something I haven't seen before. But I do bring it up just to let you know that we are in this configuration in concert with what O and I zoning has on the books for a building setback. I'm going to make this quick, onto the variance itself. Why are we requesting the variance to go about 10 feet further south and further east? There is currently a 30-foot building rear setback. The parking structure is considered, you know, we have to fall within that setback. So pushing the deck, you know, 10 feet in, 10 feet in, gets us the spatial configuration that you see here. So really, it just all comes down to getting as much parking as we can on the site in a responsible manner. Emory Healthcare, their institutional ratio for parking that they try to meet on sites is five spaces per thousand square foot of office building. And we know that this site can't accommodate that without just some, you know, massive structured parking that I don't think anybody here really would support for this site where it is. We right now have designed this site where the parking ratio is about 4.2 per thousand square feet. So under Emory's institutional standards. But looking at the tenants they have in mind, the way the buildings are going to get outfitted and the current use of the surgery center, they feel comfortable coming off their institutional standards. So it's a little bit of a compromise on their side. But again, to get into parking, the way that Emory Healthcare wants it, to have the accessible parking up front and this general configuration, it does mean that the deck itself has a shift a little further south into that buffer, which is why we're asking for the variance. Now Gables Dunwoody is just south of the property line. And this line right here, you can see it, they have a parking deck that's on their property that gets as close as seven and a half feet to the shared property line. So we're asking to put the deck no closer than 20 feet from the shared parking property line, which is, you know, almost three times further away than the deck on the adjacent property. In the spirit of compromise, we know that when, you know, we go to the city of Dunwoody and ask for a variance, that we want to offer up something to help mitigate some of the concerns. So in our application for the variance, we did suggest that we would double the transitional buffer along the edges of the deck from what code requires, which is 10 feet to 20 feet to help mitigate some of those concerns. Staff has included that in the, as a condition within the rezoning. But we would encourage you, if you don't accept the variance, which of course we would encourage you to, that you strike that condition from the site because we're going to have to find surface parking somewhere to get to that 4.2 parking space if we can't design the site in this kind of configuration. So there will have to be some surface parking in the rear. And we would recommend that you just let us design that with the code required transitional buffer of 10 feet, not the 20 that we've offered up. So in general. Oh yeah, got it. Thank you. Sorry, one of our teammates just wanted to note, there's, I think, just a typo in the application. I'm sorry, in the staff report saying that this was a four-story building. It is a three-story building and the parking deck itself is just one-story tall. All right. So in conclusion, when we design healthcare sites, accessibility, legibility, clarity is paramount. The safety of patients coming to the site is of utmost concern to Emory Healthcare. I think we've designed the site that meets those basic tenants. When the staff says that they feel that we have not, we haven't provided the optimal layout and that they say that the variance isn't tied to the width of the site, I disagree with that. I think we provided the optimal layout for a healthcare facility and the one that you see here on this rendering. And there is a hardship that is outside of everybody's control. It is the width of the property itself from property to property line, which is making us request the variance in terms of getting a good site design in that meets the healthcare needs of Emory Healthcare. So we would recommend that on the rezoning conditions, so you accept variance number one. I'm sorry, condition number one, but strike the reference to exhibit C, which pushes the building past the 50-yard setback that the code requires. We would also recommend that you accept the variance for the 10-foot encroachment for the deck. But as part of that, also accept the condition number five and the rezoning, which is to double the transitional yard from 10 to 20 feet. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. At this time, I want to start to my right with Commissioner Anders. Now it is a public hearing. All right. I'm not sure if that exceeded the, the general ten minute allotment, but I want to offer the same amount of time to any opposed parties at this point who would like to speak. Do we have anybody? Are we online at this point too, or is there somebody manning a Zoom as well? Okay, okay. So any opposition at this point? I'm sorry, I'm not having trouble hearing. Okay. Would you like to step forward? If you would, please state your name and your address and we'll hear your comments now.
I'm Dr. Alan Miller. I'm in 4553. I've been there for a long time. So I understand the dynamics of what are going on here. My problem and my concern is as follows. We're making a big assumption that Emory is going to improve this area. I disagree. And the reason is very simple. Since they've shown up, they've trashed the place. I could show you evidence of trash everywhere. I can show you evidence of buildings not being used during the pandemic because their physicians didn't even want to see patients. I don't understand how putting a three or four story building there makes this area nicer at all. In fact, it actually looks like an eyesore. If you look at their buildings, when you walk, when you go down that road, it's not like it was in the old days. At least there was a hospital there. Now all you have is these big conglomerate blue buildings, pretty sterile, transient physicians going in and out of their system. I know that doesn't make a difference in your zoning. But I think you need to take that into consideration. And also, what about the physicians and tenants in those buildings that have been there for a long time? As far as I understand, this is a land lease. There is a building on that that is owned by a PNS associates. I don't know what the dynamics of that agreement are because we've been having trouble finding the actual documents regarding the initial land lease, which is 50 something years ago. But as far as I know, that building is actually owned by a private company and I actually am basically a condo inside that, that building. I pay taxes. I've been there for a long time. So what happens to the tenants? So we get kicked out? Are patients who've been going there for 10, 20 years? You know, what happens to them? They, they have free parking. They have, they know where we are. So there's a lot of dynamics that go into rezoning this. And also you wanted it to be parks and other things. You're going to put a really ugly building there. I'm sorry. So those are my thoughts. I didn't come really prepared to speak. I just thought I'd come prepared to speak from, from the heart. I'm also a Dunwoody, I was, I was born in this town. My parents live in Dunwoody. I live in John's Creek, but there's nothing beautiful about putting these conglomerate buildings up, honestly. And frankly, the healthcare of Emory is nothing spectacular. So I think when you say you're going to put a top institution there, I think you should actually look at what the physicians in the community actually think, not just the Emory side. But I appreciate you listening to me. I hope you're all doing well. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. We will entertain additional opposition, should there be any. There being none, we'll go ahead and close the comment period and move to commission comment. Want to start to my right with Commissioner Anders and we'll move sequentially from Commissioner Anders across the dais here. So Commissioner Anders.
Thanks, sir. I had a few questions, mostly for the applicant, I think. You mentioned the parking ratio discussion is my understanding is the existing building that will remain is a surgical center, correct?
That's correct.
And this new building will mostly be medical office?
That's correct.
Okay. So I'm just kind of curious as to how you derive those, those ratios with those two uses. I'm just kind of.
So that is a institutional ratio that comes from Emory Healthcare that is relayed to us as a civil engineering landscape architecture firm. Mike Mason with Emory Healthcare is here today. Mike, I'm not sure if you want to touch base on the five to 1,000 square foot parking ratio.
Can you, can you approach the mic and identify yourself, please?
Thank you. I am Mike Mason, Vice President of Operations for Emory Healthcare. And so the planning is one of, one of my many job titles, but a ratio of five spaces per thousand is pretty much an industry standard. It is not an institutional standard that is alone for Emory Healthcare. When you look at the number of spaces required to support high turnover medical practices, it is typically three to three and a half for patients and one and a half to two for staff. And so that, that industry standard is a pretty well-known standard from from a parking capacity standard. Ambulatory surgery has a lower turnover because, you know, most patient encounters, the time they spend in a surgery center such as the ambulatory surgery center at Dunwoody where we typically do about 10,000 surgeries a year out of that location and that number has been consistent over the past few years, even through the pandemic. Those patients typically are there 90 minutes to two hours. In a physician practice, your turnover is usually between two to three patients per hour per physician, per exam room. And that's how those numbers are like, if that helps.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ken, could you speak to the, the grade of these two parcels that will be combined as one? The elevation of the buildings, the parking deck as it relates to the neighbors. The elevation of the buildings, the parking deck as it relates to the neighbors. You mentioned, you mentioned the Gables parking deck and. Mentioned something about your parking deck. Can you just speak to, and I know there's some townhouses and another medical building. Can you kind of speak to the elevation of all of that?
Absolutely, I'd be happy to. So there is a small medical office building adjacent to the property right here on this corner. These are townhomes and apartments that are over to the southeast. Gables Dunwoody extends this entire property line here. Then you've got the public right of way, the park to the north. And then this is the enclave at Dunwoody. This is pretty dense, single family homes, three story. That are, they're pushed up fairly close to the street, I would say. But their backyards are between the sidewalk itself and their building because their front road is. Within their parcel itself. So from a grading standpoint, essentially, the grade going up north Shaleford rises. And then when you take a right on the furnish all court, it begins to descend down to the site. So there's a high point here at this corner and a steep slope that takes you down to the ASC. I would say the ASC is pretty flat. The existing medical office buildings that are over to the east side. I would say on average are like five to six feet lower than the ASC. So what we're proposing to do is actually raise up the elevation over the existing buildings. To ensure that these two buildings speak a little clearer to each other and they have good ADA accessibility between the two of them. There is an outfall pipe right here that goes into a concrete ditch that then leads out to the creek. Past this development over here on this side. So we have to, this is the kind of the low point for the site. So all of our drainage and stormwater management will eventually find its way to this low point. Which means what's gonna happen is that the elevation of the building on this side will probably be a little higher. Just because we're not gonna be matching the floor to floor, there'll be a foundation wall that turns down. And that actually allows us to tuck our parking and service up underneath at a lower elevation with a screen wall. So that there's essentially the fact of loading dock, you know, typically loading dock is four feet in height. Because of the way the grade is naturally gonna fall here, we'll be able to meet that existing grade and then trucks will be able to back up into that loading dock and it'll all be screened from the neighbors here. The parking deck itself, one of the things we've really worked hard to do in our preliminary grading plans. Is to make sure that we aren't grading past the existing curb line that runs along the east side and the south side. If you look at those photos or on the survey that Madeline showed, there is a surface parking lot that runs this entire length. All of our grades are tying back into the grades that are along that curb and gutter. We're not proposing to adjust the grades significantly here and here. That's one of the reasons why we believe and are happy to support the staff recommendation to save trees along both these sides. Because we're not gonna be grading into this. And just graphically, the existing trees are shown in dark green or proposed trees are in a yellowish green. So you can kind of get a sense of how many trees we think we can protect because the grading isn't significant in those areas.
What's the elevation of the parking deck gonna be in relation to the Gables?
It's gonna be, okay, so the deck.
So Gables has, when I was looking at this earlier.
It's recessed. So when your, their top level, their parking deck is slightly elevated above the property line. But then there's a soil now wall that runs along it and then there's a lower portion of the parking. That's actually on grade with the rest of the development that's lower this way.
Okay, so you explain to me what Gables deck is. How's that height difference compared to your parking?
So our parking deck, it's gonna be a little funky because of the grading gymnastics that I kind of explained. Tying back into those existing grades along this property line. The deck height itself is gonna be, the top of the deck is gonna be flat. It's gonna be tied to the second floor of the building. But the bottom of the deck is actually gonna slope and warp somewhat in order for us to tie back into the existing grades along that existing curb. So the height of the deck here, we anticipate is gonna be somewhere around ten feet. It's likely gonna get about sixteen feet tall where we're, our outfall is over here on this corner. And then, you know, the grade of the road will slope back up in order to get to the right of way.
And so how does that corner compare to the apartments? I know there's the deck and then there's some apartments and then there's the townhouses. I'm just trying to.
Right here. We aren't in, our development will not encroach any further than the existing surface parking.
That's not what I'm asking. I'm asking you what the elevation will be. Your deck and the apartments.
Sure. So there is a steep slope that comes down from this portion of our property. To the back of these townhomes. I don't remember exactly what that elevation is, but these homes look out towards the vegetated hill. They're not up at an elevation where they're looking at the top. And that slope is consistent along this entire property line.
So your, your parking deck as proposed would have an entry and exit in one area that would be kind of on the. What is that, east?
Over here, yep. So the top of the deck, what we're proposing is that there would be on grade access here. And that this ramp, right now it's about a ten percent slope, takes you up to the top of the deck, one way circulation through for employees and back out. And it's interesting, since you brought it up, pushing the building further to the road. Means that we have to push the deck up further to the road, which means that this ramp gets shorter and steeper. And one of the concerns that I do have by doing that is that for the single family homes across the street. You know, we're trying to save trees and create a green space in front of where that ramp is. If this all gets pushed up, the ramp gets steeper, shorter, and pushed a little further to the road.
So there's no way to ramp it internally?
We have studied this about twenty different ways and we've found the ultimate solution.
There's no reason to have an entrance or an exit near the circular drive?
We purposely, in order, in order to keep the circulation for cars running counterclockwise or counterclockwise. Didn't show this connection to here and that allows us to create that on grade green space between the two buildings.
Couple more questions, Thomas, and I'll be, I should be done here. The loading dock, you mentioned the screening of that. Is there anything else that would be visible to the apartments or the other homeowners? Like generators?
So we are.
Other electrical.
Sure, got it. Our intent is to tuck all that behind this corner of the property here within that freestanding screen wall. So we don't anticipate that there's gonna be any visible utilities from the right of way or from these homes. And certainly not from this development, which is so much lower in elevation on the southeast corner. Over at the ASC, their existing service yard is on this corner of the property. And it's, I wouldn't say it's a, it's not a loading dock per se, or, you know, a screened. Loading and mechanical area like we're proposing here. But we are showing that the, we would maintain that entrance into the building and that there would be recycling and. Waste collected at that point as well.
Last question, what's the design of the parking deck? I don't think we've seen or heard anything related to help.
Sure. The architecture is here today, so Shelley, if I, if I botch this, please step up. We are intending that to be a port of place or a structure. Not my, what I understand is that it wouldn't be like a precast parking deck that comes in to kit of parts and is sold on site. But this is gonna be something that's made of concrete that's poured onsite specifically because the configuration is so wonky with all the gray changes. So it would be concrete. Along all sides. So you see the spandrel panels would be concrete, the surface of itself would be concrete. The bottom of the deck where we're on grade, that doesn't necessarily need to be concrete. I could see that going to an asphalt parking lot underneath the concrete structure itself. We haven't made that material determination yet.
Doesn't sound too attractive. What about lighting in that parking deck? I mean, I understand it needs to be secure, but what will the neighbors see?
Got it. The first thing I would say is it'll be completely code compliant, whatever the city's requirements are for that. I don't think there's any intent to light outside of the footprint itself. If your concern is any kind of light bleeding off the property, I don't think this team would object there being a condition for full cutoffs on the lighting to make sure that there's no trespass. That's certainly not to anyone's advantage.
Hi, Shelley Atella. In terms of like the visibility of the parking duck, for the most part, the building itself shields the majority of the duck. The, the ramp creates another blocking point. This is a screen wall that's made of the same materiality of the building. So that's hiding the loading dock and anything over here. And we are proposing a translucent screen in this area. So any sightlines from the green space or the park would be blocked. And it is translucent in terms of, there's like essentially slats so that we do have some safety for any of the pedestrians. At nighttime here, we're getting some light in here. We just, we're not trying to make a enclosed box for safety reasons and for natural light. So you can see that here. It's a very light fin type system. So we get air circulation, but you can see, like, you can't see beyond our screen and see the parking structure. So really, the only place that you can see our deck is if you're already behind the building. But everything by here is blocked by the trees and any sightlines here, we have added additional screening as well.
Thank you for answering all my questions.
Thank you, Commissioner Anders. Commissioner Harris, questions?
Kirk did a great job asking a lot of mine. So I do understand, I absolutely understand what you're talking about in terms of a medical facility. And so I think, Richard, probably this is more to, towards some of the other points, which, so I'm gonna bring up something different. Which would be the design elements of the building. So the design elements of the building are in stark contrast with what Georgetown is trying to move towards. I understand that Emory has a brand and so that would be the architectural. Design would be to meet some of the Emory colors and Emory brand, get some tenuously when you're trying to work within a city structure and to blend in. With what would be a master plan, this does stand out like somewhat of a sore thumb. So my question to you is, have you all considered what has the dialogue been, and this is on both sides. Regarding the design features of this building, just from what the Georgetown master plan is asking for.
I am way outside my lane on this one. So I'll ask Shelley or perhaps Mike even to talk about some of the Emory healthcare standards. I would say that as far as I have seen within code and Madeline, Richard, please correct me if this is wrong. But I don't recall there being anything specific in O and I that speaks to the material that has to go on the building. Although I do understand that the master plan for the, the sector of the city does make those recommendations.
And code, code is different from what would be a master plan. So the master plan would be for keeping things cohesive within an area. So that's why I'm wondering what the dialogue has been. So against code, not against code, O I versus residential versus commercial. My question comes down to the, in terms of the master plan for the Georgetown area. Has there been dialogue regarding a revision of the design in order to become more cohesive with that master plan?
Sure. I don't think, correct me if I'm wrong, I don't think we really have had a conversation about it. I think we did obviously present the building elevations previously to staff. And I'm, I really, I can't remember, Madeline, if there was any conversation about materials months ago.
So we didn't have any extensive conversation regarding materials. Early, when they first came to the, to us before. As they applied, our main concern was related to the setbacks and the configuration of the parking lot. So that's what a lot of our early conversations centered around. They at one point did provide us a plan that showed the building closer to the road, but, you know, according. You know, when they applied, they went with this configuration, you know, for the reasons that they stated earlier. But there were no extensive conversations again regarding materials.
Okay, thank you.
And there are no conditions regarding materials either. It's just something I mentioned in the staff report.
Right. My next question is, do you happen to have a building or a picture of the existing? Facility, not, not the one that you'll be tearing down, but the other Emory facility.
I know in our application, we did include those photos. I don't know if it's able, you're able to pull that up.
Unfortunately, and just seeing my, my application packet, it kicks me out when I try to get to this. It says it has difficulty loading everything.
Yeah, what, what view do you want to see exactly?
I'd love to just see the building itself. Because I'd want to see again with the cohesiveness, we're putting in a new building, how does it blend with the existing one? Is there gonna be harmony there? And then while we're pulling that up, really quick question, I think following up on Kirk's question about the screening in the parking deck. Is it our best guess right now with that twenty foot buffer of trees? That any light that's coming from the parking deck towards the townhouses and apartments behind it? That that twenty foot buffer would kill any lighting from the parking deck?
Yeah, I think the way the lighting is redesigned, to ensure that there's full cutoffs in the fixture itself, so we're not relying on the buffer to provide that screen, but fixture itself.
Okay. Perfect, thanks.
I don't think there's any objection if the team wants to include a condition for.
Thank you. So are those, those are the two that are being torn down? That's not the other Emory building?
The Google street view doesn't go down for national courts, so there's not a great view of the existing.
Okay. I see. Yeah, technology.
Yeah, so there is. Two story structure, you can see some of the similar Emory branding that's being proposed for the new building itself.
Yeah, so if you remember that materiality page, that was actually a screenshot from the existing adjacent building. So when we were looking at the concept for this building, we're trying to create a campus type environment. So that existing ASC that will be remaining is not currently in scope for this. It's basel type work. You can see the use of more brutalist type construction. So about more classic modern construction, you see the angularity of the canopies. You'll notice the blue branding where the Emory entrances. So the color scheme is really the white and just a little bit of blue. So we translated that into this new building. So that when the two read together, especially with this turnabout, that you feel like you're in a more cohesive type Emory branded campus. So the indicators that tell you where you are within the building. The blue indicates circulation and arrival. The use of stucco is similar to the existing building. And so stucco too is one of the more traditional type materiality. And the use of any kind of metal is very limited and it means there's something special happening. So any use of metal means that you have a right of entrance. And you'll also notice the nod to that canopy that you can see on the existing ASC. The angularity, that too gets mimicked again and unites the two buildings together. And when you look at the site plan, you'll see the buildings are slightly skewed. So that is you're walking from one to the other. There is a connection between the two. And we wanted to make sure that that was prevalent and also a more modern aesthetic as part of the Emory branding. So when you are at their location, you know, this says Emory without having to read the sign, which is only on one location on the building as well.
Thank you, Commissioner Harris. Commissioner Cameron?
So I don't know if this question is, I guess it's for the applicant. If the building were moved closer to the street, as in the drawing from the. From our staff, could the entrance be? On the south side so that the circle could connect, so the building could move? You could still have the entrance on the south side of the building by the circle?
I see. So you would suggest if the building shifts up, we have our canopy in the main entrance here at this corner. We would flip that to the south side, so that that would receive in the circle. I think that would have to be the way it's configured because now you've got three bays of parking in the back. I think that would have to be the way it's configured, because now you've got three bays of parking in the back, and everybody is entering the site from the south with no preferential parking to the north. You know, one of the things, again, with healthcare, pushing the building up to the street, there's very little, if, you know, there's not a lot of people seeking physical therapy who are walking from their homes to, uh, to a medical building to receive that. So we want to anticipate that there'd be much at all, uh, if any, traffic from the street into the main entrance itself. Um, so yes, the, the, the door would have to move to the other corner, uh, in that scenario.
And then is, has there been any consideration to, if you have to expand the parking deck then to going below grade a level?
Um, no, there hasn't been, I mean.
Those are my only questions, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Redmondson?
Um, I just wanted to get some clarity, I guess, on the preferential parking spots that are at the top of the site. Is the intention there, has it been discussed how many would be for accessibility is versus like, I'm just trying to understand that. I understand the point of it, but can you give some more information on that?
Yep. Um, it doesn't show up graphically, and I honestly can't remember how many spaces we are proposing in the front. But yes, these would be the ADA compliant accessible spaces right here along the, the building side of the parking. Um, for the ASC, they've got some existing ADA parking over here that kind of ties into their existing canopy. So yes, the preferential parking for ADA compliance would happen here. And then along this bay closest to the front door of the building itself.
Okay, and just, um, so that I'm clear for clarity, we were talking about, um, the parking deck is only for employees? Or you would also allow guests to park in there as well?
So it is, there's a ground floor and then one floor of structured parking above it. So the employees coming to the deck, they'll come down per national court. They'll turn into the site up this ramp. This will be dedicated employee parking on the top of the deck. For patients coming in, they circle around, they're either coming into the deck on the lower level underneath it here, or circling around, coming back this way and underneath it here. So patients, visitors, they're all on the surface. Only employees would be parking on the top of the deck itself.
Okay. Um, moving on to the other topic, which I appreciate, um, Commissioner Harris bringing up. I think I do have concerns about the facade. Uh, and in looking at the picture that we've got on the screen here, it looks more brick. I think it would be helpful to understand what is currently in place, because it does, I do think it is important to have a consistent feel and look across the board, so.
So your, your question is, what is the existing ASC made out of?
Yes.
Um, it is brick, stucco and metal panel and glass.
Okay, okay, that's helpful. Yeah, I think, um, can I give, am I allowed to give a comment? Is that okay? Okay, perfect. Yeah, I think from, from my perspective, the brick that is currently there, while it is a modern feel and look to it and aligned with the, the branding, um, that's also part of the master plan, right? So seeing more of that brick integrated into this concept would make me feel a lot more comfortable that it's aligned with the Georgetown master plan and would be something to consider if we move forward with it. That's it.
Thank you, Commissioner. Uh, question for, for staff. The, uh, the doctor who spoke in opposition raised some potential issues with regard to, uh, with regard to the ownership. This is city-owned building, city-owned property. What are we looking at there?
The property is city-owned. I don't know the details about the building itself. I know the property is owned by the city.
Well, then kind of extending from that question, you know, one of the, uh, criteria that we have to look at when pondering a, uh, variance review is potential injury to public health. And the doctor cited, uh, the fact that there are patients being treated out of these buildings now. Do we have an issue with public health potentially as contemplated by that statute in allowing redevelopment of the property?
That wasn't something that was explored by staff. I'm happy to look into it further.
Okay, okay. Uh, that, that'll do it for my comments as well. Uh, so at this point, uh, let's go ahead and, and, uh, see if there's a, if there's our motion that we want to entertain, or yes, or are there more questions? Yes, Commissioner Harris?
Sorry, one more question. Do we, and, and this might be for staff, do we have pictures of the, of the plan that was submitted? Or are we even allowed to see the plan that was submitted? That might have been closer to the street. That was more acceptable to you all? Was it more acceptable to you all?
It was more acceptable. Um, I would have to dig through email correspondence. I don't have it on hand just because it wasn't part of the application, so I didn't feel like it was appropriate to.
Of course. No, yeah, of course. I'm just, that was brought up. Why did you all revert from that one that was originally submitted to what you ended up submitting in the end?
So, um, to be clear, the site plan that was originally submitted and shared with staff was more in keeping with this, what you see here. Um, we did get some comments from staff that we addressed in this configuration here, and it's, it has changed a little bit. Um, when we presented this to staff at the time, we were unsure which zoning to pursue for this project. So the property line, if it runs down the site this way, this side of the property is PD, Plan Development. This side of the property is O and I. Staff was encouraging us to go for a PD rezoning for the entire parcel. Um, and understandably so, because that gives the city the most say. Um, and having a site plan specific, um, thing that's approved that the city adopts, right? There's no zoning code that it ties to it. We would say, okay, we've met with staff, we pushed the building around in the front, we've done all these things, and now the PD, the site plan itself is getting adopted for the PD. The more we research the code, um, and the more we talk to Emory Healthcare and all of our partners, um, this configuration for the circulation and all the reasons I explained before was their preference. And the more we dove into looking at the O and I zoning category, it sure seemed to fit this better than PD. When you read the city's code, PD zoning is very specific, that it's there in order to ensure that developments that might not otherwise be allowed by code are able to be considered. O and I is very clear that when you have an office or institutional use, that is the overriding zoning district that should be considered. That's why we went with the O and I. And it just happened to be that the front yard, you know, building setback also met our desire to keep the building in this configuration, not the PD configuration that staff encouraged us to explore.
Richard, one more question. Um, have y'all talked to, well, I don't know if there's actually people living in those homes across the street yet? If they've moved in yet, I'm curious what the neighborhood's perspective would be on having the building more forward versus, uh, pulled further back from the, um, single-family homes across the street in that development. Is, was there any, are they even moving there yet?
I don't think anybody showed up to your meeting, but, uh, and there are a couple homeowners over there.
I know they're, I know they're on the, um, I know people have moved in who are on the walking trail side. I just wasn't sure if homes have been closed and moved into on the street side.
Not that I recall. We did, um, at staff's request, you know, I said, hey, how do we reach out to these new residents that might not be within the list they sent? Um, staff recommended that we drop off letters in person in mailboxes, and that's what we did. So a month and a half ago, I think we've had all the residents that moved in. But I don't, I think the buildings on the permi shot court side were still under construction.
Okay, that's what I was wondering. I'm just, I'm trying to think about it from that perspective, what a homeowner may want from their backyard view also. What are your thoughts on that, Richard?
I think you'd have to ask them.
Okay, are there any other questions? Uh, then I think.
Um, so the parking deck, you said it, it would, if the building were moved closer to the street, the parking deck would have to be moved to? What is the, um, minimum to maximum distance that you need between the parking deck and the building?
Got it. Um, so yes, I think if the, if we were to push the building to the street, the parking deck has to come with it. Um, because, you know, the employees are parking on top of the deck, they've got a second floor controlled access into the building itself. Um, the, the requirement between the separation for the two is 10 feet, which is what you see here graphically. Um, and then just to reiterate something I said, if the building moves up and the deck moves up, we've got to provide this amount of parking to the south. So then there would be another bay of surface parking that actually per code, we would be able to push to that 10-foot transitional yard, um, which would be 10 feet closer to the property line than what we've shown here with that, um, additional 10 feet for the 20-foot transitional yard we're proposing.
Whose requirement is the 10 feet between the building and the parking deck?
Um, that is a code, um, IFC requirement, is that right? So it's a, it's a fire safety, um, rating separation requirement.
Any other commission comments or questions? Kirk, impression, Commissioner Anders?
Can you speak to number five, staff condition number five again for me?
Absolutely, sure. So, um, staff made, so we had two applications. Uh, we had the rezoning application and then the concurrent variance application. In our variance application, that's requesting that the deck be pushed 10 feet, um, into the rear setback. We offered up, um, exceeding the transitional yard from 10 to 20, uh, from 10 to 20 feet in order to make the, um, you know, hopefully make the repositioning of the deck into that encroachment a little more palatable. So I think what happened is staff took that suggestion from the variance, um, liked the idea, um, because I think it probably frankly supports, you know, if we can't get in surface parking here. Um, yeah, I think it helps support just moving everything north to the street, which is obviously what they're encouraging. Um, so I think they took that suggestion from the variance, applied it to the zoning. Um, but again, it wasn't something that was offered up as part of our zoning application, it was part of the variance application.
So what adjustments would you make to five?
Um, I would suggest that you, um, accept our variance application, um, and allow us to build the deck, um, closer to the property line, which would still be further away than surface parking, and then accept that, um, condition in the rezoning. And we'll provide, uh, be happy to provide a, um, transitional yard and, you know, twice its width.
Commissioner Anders, anything further? Uh, Commissioner Harris? My, my, my thoughts are, uh, well represented by this, although I, I will say, I think it does bear, you know, this is, this is a moderately new process, this, uh, concurrent variance. And, you know, it, it's not something that I had given a lot of thought to until the doctor spoke up, uh, in opposition about concerns for his patients. And, and I, and I don't know what we're looking at here with regard to detrimental to public health or injurious to the property improvements, but I think that it would be wise for council to take inventory of that regardless of what the pleasure of this body is. And so that's, that's, those are my thoughts. And so at this point, uh, if we're ready and if there aren't more questions to entertain, does somebody have a, uh, a motion that they want to propose?
Well, I wanted to piggyback on what you were saying regarding your thoughts that you shared. In particular, also, there was a brought up, uh, there was a concern brought up over the lease that existed in the building. Um, and so I think there might be a few details to iron out over the next month that I think I'd love to have city staff look into regarding the existing buildings and the leases. To, um, Commissioner O'Brien's question regarding the healthcare that's currently existing there, would there be a negative impact to the residents or to the area by removing those buildings? Um, so because of those two things primarily, and then also I wouldn't mind if y'all would dive a little more into, um, between the two parties, dive a little more into the aesthetics conversation as it goes to the Georgetown master plan. So for those reasons, I would make a motion to recommend deferral for, um, 30 days to the next meeting.
Okay, Commissioner Harris, uh, um, Richard, did you?
Yeah, um, on the lease issue, the city has researched it. I don't know all the answers. Uh, but the, they have a sunset provision in there. They have to be out. I don't.
Hello, commissioners. My name is Bruce Probst. I'm with Cushman in Wakefield, represent Emory. The city owns the land under the buildings. The buildings are there by virtue of a ground lease. And that ground lease expires November of this year. And so the city then gets ownership of both the land and the buildings, and that's what we're proposing to buy. I don't know if that helps.
That, that.
So you don't share, you don't have any concerns along the lines of ongoing obligations with the existing tenants in the buildings?
No, their leases have to by law be tied to the expiration of the ground lease. They don't have any right to pass that.
So then construction would not begin until November?
That's correct.
Okay, so.
Okay, that, that actually.
Oh, excuse me, thank you.
Directly hits on point, my concerns. Okay. Uh, step up to the, uh.
That's been a, that's been a, an assumption on the bill. But I don't believe that's the case, because the person who, the people that own that are a corporation, they pay taxes. They actually have a ownership of the building. They built the building, so I'm not so sure that's correct. That's kind of been an assumption. But, um, according to Dr. Silver, who owns the building and us who actually have some type of quasi arrangement ownership, that's not quite, quite, I think, the, the actual, uh, scenario here. It was a, it was a, it's a 50-year-old contract, I believe, which was a land lease. Um, in the old days, what they did was they basically can, uh, took doctors, you know, doctors wanted to buy, build a building, and they basically coerced them. Hospitals said, we'll give you this for like a buck. You build a building, but you bring all your patients to the hospital. That's kind of how it was back in, in those days. It doesn't work that, that way now. But I do know that there is ownership of that building. That building does pay taxes. Um, it is a corporation that owns the building. It is a land lease. I do not believe that building actually, um, just immediately falls into the, to the, to the land.
Can I ask him a question?
And also another thing, real quick, I'll, I'll answer any questions. I'm not trying to cause a lot of problems here. I know I probably am. There are, those three buildings that are there right now, there's, they're not even close to looking like anything of a plan. They're about, you've got a white building across the street. You've got this 50-year-old brick building that has a frontage, but when you look behind it, it's just the same old brick building that's been there forever. I mean, I've been in the area for a while. And then our building is just basically a stucco building that actually blends in everything. And then you have parking lot, and then you're gonna have another parking lot. You gotta, I mean, it really, you know.
I'm, I'm gonna stop you there. Commissioner Cameron, did you have questions?
When does your lease expire?
Um, I believe my lease never, it only expires when there's something that happens with the building. I have an ongoing lease, I have an open-ended lease with Dr. Silver, who actually owns the building. The problem is Dr. Silver is quite old. Um, and, um, you know, is, is obviously, uh, with what's gone on, is probably retiring like many physicians have decided to do. Um, so there's a lot of issues regarding his understanding of everything, um, regarding this. So, uh, we, we've talked about it amongst the owner, the, the people that, uh, there's probably seven or eight providers in the building. So some of us has talked about it, and there's a lot of confusion about really what the scenario really is.
Thank you, Doctor.
Uh-huh, thank you.
Uh, so going back to Commissioner Harris's point that I thought might be resolved, but maybe not resolved, it seems like there's some uncertainty.
I might be able to shed some, no, I might be able to shed some light, but I want to, I want us to verify it, um, to Commissioner Harris's point. I believe with a land lease, um, they would pay taxes, but they pay taxes on the actual improvements and the buildings to the lands, not where the actual land itself. So I think it might be warranted to provide the current tenants just some additional information on the differences between that, um, may help resolve some of the, the communication there. So it makes sense to me that they would be paying taxes, but it would be on the actual improvements to the property, not actual land taxes at the time, so. Yeah. So that, if that helps at all, but I do think we should get them some added clarity.
Well, and then again, so there, there has been, there's been a motion by Commissioner Harris. Um, and.
So it's good to have clarity over the land lease. Um, and I do think that the city, I would recommend that they work with the current tenants to be able to help them perhaps understand, um, the legality behind that. But I do still, from an aesthetics point of view, looking at the building with the brick, um, that they're trying to build a greater campus, I think there's some more work that could be done there. I actually don't find it overly, um, appealing personally to look at. Um, and then I also, I hear both sides of the story in regards of like why we would.
And then I also, I hear both sides of the story in regards of like why we would want to have a circle around. I do like what Commissioner Cameron suggested in terms of a flip, um, to be able to pull it more forward. So I'd like to see a little more dialogue in terms of the, um, site plan and how it could meet the city's desires. And then also try to perhaps find a way to bring in some of the elements that are in the Georgetown master plan. So because of those reasons, I would still recommend deferral for a month, at least to be able to allow the applicant and the city to continue to dialogue and work together.
May I add to your rationale there, the, the specific reference to chapter 27 dash 397 with regard to understanding the impact to public health that might be caused by that. I'd like that to be a consideration if we're going to defer. I'd like that to be part of the soup that is pondered as they go through that. So, um, are, are you comfortable adding that?
Absolutely.
As a reason for the defer.
Absolutely.
Okay. So do you want to form your motion?
Sure. Um, I would recommend a deferral to the next meeting. And, uh, for the purpose of city staff and the applicant to continue to review the ability to perhaps move the site plan to meet the city's recommendations, to continue to look at the aesthetics of the building, to have it match better with the Georgetown master plan and to also look at the healthcare implications by removing the two existing buildings on site.
Thank you, Commissioner Harris, for your motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, Commissioner Cameron has seconded. We've got a motion. We've got a second. Is there any discussion on the motion on the table? Commissioner Anders?
Yeah, I think I'm on board with a deferral, but maybe for different reasons. I'm just kind of perplexed by the parking deck encroachment in the rear and staff wanting them to push the building to the front in a way that will not benefit the, the park across the street as much. And also doesn't match the existing building that has driveways and parking that matches what the applicant's proposed. So I'm kind of, uh, struggling for different reasons, um, on this one. Y'all know I'm always talking about parking decks. So I asked several questions about the parking deck, if it's gonna be in view of the neighbors, I want to try to do what we can to make it look a little better than 98% of the parking decks in the world. So, um, I just wanted to go on the record that my concerns were maybe a little bit different, but I think I'm okay with a deferral.
Okay. Are, are there any other comments on the motion that's on the floor? Richard, at this time, do we, do we handle this with a single vote for deferral? Or do we need to defer through two motions in two seconds?
No, you can just, uh, vote for the fall now.
Okay. Uh, so, uh, all right, we've got, uh, we've got a, a motion, we've got a second. Our discussion's complete at this time. Uh, all those in favor of granting a deferral, please raise your hand. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Okay. Moving forward to other business. Uh, I have, I have one small bit of other business to direct towards staff. A note on today's agenda. The commissioner names at the top are, are out of date. And I would respectfully request that before minutes are assembled or everything else, we have that updated to reflect our new commissioners. Uh, is there any other, other business that we need to contemplate as a body? That was a negative?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Well, just one thing I'd like to say, and I hate to be the pain in anybody's neck, but, um, on the minutes, I abstained because I wasn't at the last meeting, but we had talked about making it so that Commissioner Edmondson and I were not marked as absent.
Correct.
Thank you.
I actually think I was just absent because I missed my flight, so. Oh, really? I thought I was supposed to be here. So there we go. Perfect.
Yeah. Yeah, if you want to make a, a new motion to approve, reapprove the minutes with those additions.
All right. Do you want, why don't, why don't you go ahead and one of you care to make a motion with regard to the approval of the minutes then?
All right, I would move that we approve the minutes as voted earlier, subject to removing Commissioner Edmondson and me as being marked absent so that no one thinks we shirked any of our responsibilities.
All right, Commissioner, Commissioner Cameron, uh, moved. I heard Commissioner Anders second that at this time. Uh, all in favor of granting that motion, raise your hand. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Okay. Uh, no other business at this point. So at this point, I'll open up the floor for public comment. Looks like, uh, the house is cleared up and we're not taking anything from online. Is that correct? Okay. Uh, so we'll go ahead and move forward to commission comment. I'll start at my right. Commissioner Anders, Commissioner Harris.
Actually, hold on. We should welcome, welcome. Again, it's, it's, I will say as a, as a point of privilege, it's really nice to have some other women up here. So I, I appreciate that, perhaps not the most PC thing to say, but thank you. So.
Good deal. Commissioner Cameron?
I just want to say thanks for having me. Um, I'm excited for this new position. I'm excited to learn more about, um, the functionings of this group and of our, obviously very well qualified staff. So thanks for having me.
Glad to hear. Commissioner Edmondson?
Same. I just want to say how excited I am to be here. I, I served 15 years in the federal government, um, doing buildings and all of that stuff. So I know how, how much work you guys put into this. So thank you for all that you're doing. I really appreciate it and I'm really excited to get to know you guys and for us to be able to help drive Dunwoody forward. So thank you.
We're glad you joined us. Uh, any other commission comment? All right. Uh, Richard, is there anything we need to handle before we adjourn?
So Monday night, uh, city council passed an ordinance, emergency ordinance in light of the rising COVID cases. It allows to go back to hybrid meetings. So the next meeting that we have will probably be high, hybrid.
Okay.
It'll be online.
Will be our option to appear here if we wish.
Correct.
So then there'll be a Zoom screen up here and it's exactly what it sounds like. Maybe people here, maybe people at home. At least that's how it's worked.
Yeah, and that people at home can, uh, ask questions and whatnot.
Indeed.
So in the past, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Just curious who moderates the, the comments in the chat.
Well, we've got.
Okay.
So Richard, in the past, we needed a couple of people to be here, right?
Yes, but, uh, I'll give the answers to that if we have to have any of you here or it can be completely online.
Okay, thank you. Any other commission comment? Good deal. We stand adjourned. Thank you, everybody.